Good afternoon. We're going to get started when it's started and welcome to the September 17th, 2025 meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee. I would like to get started with introductions.
Good afternoon, Laura Stewart in District Four.
I'm Carla Silvestre, a school board member at large, and Ms. Zimmerman will be joining us shortly. Can I have a motion? Well, I guess we'll wait to approve the agenda till later. We begin with two informational items. First, the committee's annual work plan that will be presented to the full Board for approval is included with today's agenda. Any questions about the work plan?
No questions.
Yeah, I think you see some reoccurring topics, so that we'll be visiting each of those topics throughout our meetings this year. In addition, the informational summary for the committee's June 26, 2025 meeting is posted on Board Docs. Any questions about that?
No questions.
The first discussion item is 3.1, prioritizing capital projects. As staff come to the table, I would ask you to please introduce yourself for the record.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Andrea Swiatek. I'm the Deputy Chief of Facility Management.
Good evening. DJ Conley, Capital Budget Manager.
So we're going to pull up the slides. This is the same slides that we shared with the full board during the August 21st board meeting, and we're really here to just kind of an overview. I know a lot was discussed during that board meeting. Wanted to just highlight a few key slides to just bring it back and then open up for questions now that you've probably had a few weeks. While they're bringing up the slides, I can also just share an update. We've had an opportunity to share this presentation through a number of different avenues over the last couple of weeks and have received great feedback from people. We've presented this to the Cluster Leads at the MCCPTA meeting. We held just two open virtual meetings, one in the evening, one during the day for just the general public to come. They were able to put in questions in the chat. We presented it and then tried to answer as many questions as we could in the chat as well. This was also shared with our union presidents as well this week to allow them to ask us any questions. So again, just making, trying to make sure people are aware of how we've been moving through the planning process prior to the CIP launching in October. Do I need to do anything on my end? Okay.
Apologies.
No worries.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I asked that this come back because it was kind of towards the end of our board meeting and just, we heard it once there, but just wanted an opportunity to kind of process the information and have time to ask additional questions.
Yeah. I can keep going while we work on the presentation. I think really that one of the key points, right, is our shift away from the key facility indicators to the facility condition index. That's assessing the buildings, really looking at that facility condition assessment. We launched that same day. I was looking at a lot of information. Launched our new website, the FCI website. We have been getting feedback from people on there, asking us great questions about the FCI reports. So we appreciate those that have been sharing, clarifying questions with us. The first 54 are posted on there. And as we go, continue to go through those assessments, again, every building in our portfolio is being assessed if it was built prior to 2023. So we still have the consultant out. They're, they go week by week and are assessing different facilities. We'll continue to update that website as we go throughout the year to add the additional reports for the rest of the facilities. If you have the presentation in front of you, I'm going to jump ahead to slide five. And again, this is on Board Docs for anyone that's watching virtually from the August 21st presentation. I think what I want to emphasize about some of our long-term facility planning is this idea that, again, we're really trying to realign with the state and think about our goals for the next 20 years. We have a lot of aging infrastructure. For the last number of years, we have, you know, really been chasing a lot of capacity. And it is the opportunity for us, given where we are with capacity, to really rethink and strategize where our investments are to start to address the aging infrastructure that we have. So, you know, you'll see in October, when we roll out the CIP, this idea of renovation, anything that's sort of at least set 25 years and older, thinking about the upgrade to at least five major systems. And that's important because that's the breaking point of when we can start to receive state funding for those projects. So that was a very specific reason as why we put that five in there. We could do six, we could do seven. But instead of maybe just doing an HVAC project at a school, can we look at doing an HVAC project and a lighting, flooring and windows and do a little bit more in one year as opposed to maybe just eight weeks in the summer and really start to address some of the larger issues at that building? Again, over maybe a little bit longer period than just the eight weeks that we get in the summer.
Can you restate what's the breaking point for getting stated?
Five systems for the state.
Okay.
A renewal and really the nuanced difference between a renovation and a renewal, for a renewal, it really means bringing everything down just to the structure. Right? So you are really gutting the inside of that building. You are tearing down the interior walls. You are going just down to that structure. So whether it's concrete or steel, you are bringing everything down. In a renovation, you might keep a lot of those existing walls. Now, you might rip up every floor and ceiling if those are the systems you're replacing, but likely a lot of existing walls would remain in a renovation. And then a replacement is certainly people are very familiar with. While we anticipate, we will probably continue to do some of those, just given site constraints or we have some, you know, really significant ADA challenges that are just incredibly hard to achieve in a renewal. We really are going to look more strategically at renewals and renovations in this round. Great. So we can cover a few other slides. I think I have control now. All right. So slide six and seven are showing sort of where we are and how do we start to close some of the gap of this aging infrastructure. So this represents the elementaries. We have 137 elementaries. And when we look at that from an existing age of those facilities, 60% of them are eligible for the renovation, right? So they're 25 years and older. Only about 5% are eligible, 50 years and older, for the renewal and the replacement, right? So the bulk of what we need to be doing and focusing on are the renovation projects. And to continue to meet that long-term goal, we need to be renovating, renewing or replacing. We can imagine we're going to be doing a combination of all of this. It's not one or the other. Six to seven elementaries over the next 20 years, and that means opening those every single year. So we need to have several in design, several in construction. So we're just moving through them in the queue. We have 65 secondary, and when we looked at the age of those, very similar to elementaries, 60% of them are eligible for the renovation, meaning they're older than 25 years, while about 10% are eligible for the renewal or replacement. And with that, thinking about the long-term goal, we need to be renovating, renewing or replacing at least three secondary per year. We also went through the life cycle. So this is a big part of the facility condition assessments that were completed. And this factors into the FCI depleted value, taking into account, you know, how long does a system actually last? And I'm going to go ahead and jump to the next two because we gave two very specific examples of roofing and HVAC. And I think this has actually been pretty helpful for people to wrap their head around and for us to also put a dollar value to it. So if we take just the core 202 schools, that's the base elementary and secondary schools, and a roof has an expected useful life of 20 years, we need to be replacing approximately 10 roofs per year. That could be a combination of a standalone, we call it a countywide. You know, East Silver Spring this summer got a roof replacement and also part of a new facility that opens, right? That could all count towards that 10. If you look at what we've been doing for the last three years, on average, we've only been doing about five roof replacements. So each year, we're sort of getting further and further behind of where we need to be to keep up with the aging infrastructure. So when we looked at our current portfolio, and we do have ages of all of our roofs, what we have that is 20 years and older right now is approximately $175 million in today's construction. And it continues to get more and more expensive, certainly every year. And we did a similar analysis for HVAC. It too has an expected useful life of about 20 years. So taking the 202 schools roughly, and again, this was just focused on the schools, but we need to take the same lens across all of our facilities in the county. We need to be replacing about 10 schools per year. And over the last three years, very similar, we've only been replacing about five schools. Now HVAC has a much higher dollar value to replace, far more expensive than a roof replacement is. So taking the same lens, anything that is past that expected useful life, past that 20 years, we have about $740 million in immediate needs that we would want to replace the HVAC, probably similar to the, you know, issues and complaints that we hear on a daily basis from our schools. I'm going to keep moving on this. This is the website that we opened. This is the FCI website where you can find the reports. Again, we'll keep adding to it over the course of this school year. We also talked about how the FCI depleted value is on a scale of zero to one. So a brand-new facility, when it opens, it should have a score of zero, brand-new systems. As those systems age over time, they'll start to work their way towards one. It is an average of all of the systems and taking into account the value. So if you have a very old HVAC system, because that dollar value to replace it is so high, it would push you closer to the one. Versus a flooring, if that's the oldest thing in your facility and everything else is new, you'd be closer to zero because the dollar value to replace flooring is not as expensive as some of the other bigger systems. So they're not apples to apples. It is very much weighted on the construction and dollar cost to replace those systems in a facility.
There's no hierarchy of quality of life or, you know.
This is purely looking at what are the conditions of that facility.
Based on cost.
Based on cost of construction to replace it.
But why does that make sense? Why not, you know, what's getting in the way of operating the school or teaching and learning?
There are so many nuances to that, that this is a non-subjective way of evaluating just the conditions. So let me actually jump to this one, which is why we felt it was important to not just only take the FCI depleted value because it doesn't address exactly what you're talking about. It is just how old is the system? You know, is it fair, poor, good condition? What is that value to replace it? And that's why we are using that as 50% of the criteria that we are considering. But those other components that sort of people keep talking about is like the lived experience of it. We are trying to capture in some of these other ones for the criteria. So educational adequacy is 25% of the consideration. That includes things like access to daylight in all of our core learning spaces. So your classrooms, do we have windows? Air quality, using the air quality and the sensors that we have in our classrooms, and then classroom sizes as well. So how close are they to the educational specification? Are they undersized, which some are in our facilities? We also had talked about how the enhanced student needs, taking into account equity in the farms data and then building utilization. So are the, is the facility within that 80 to 100% utilization or is it overutilized above the 100%?
So again, so the building condition is largely based on how expensive the repairs are needed.
How old the system is, but the way that an FCI is calculated and that depleted value, it is a system that is more expensive is going to weight your FCI closer to one than to zero.
So does that put all the HVAC projects to the top?
If you have a poor HVAC system, you will likely now have a higher FCI number, yes. But I would say if you have a brand-new HVAC system, but you have incredibly poor plumbing, electrical, some of the other systems failing structure, that too could equally put you up higher. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yep. And air quality, I mean, isn't that tied to HVAC directly?
Most often, yes.
So why is it they are not at the top?
Because I think it's important to, right? It could be because there are other leaking windows. We could have moisture coming in through other opportunities, not just because of HVAC.
Okay.
Most often, it is related to that, but there could be other reasons too.
And then the enhanced student needs that I think Ms. McGuire said at the board meeting, that that's linkages to learning spaces or things, support services that need more square footage in terms of space in a building?
Sure. So like a Title I school would need more space than a non-focused school or even a focus school. There's community school activities that require more space, whether it's pantries or we have some schools with diaper depots and things like that. So typically, higher farms equals more space needed, smaller class sizes.
And I know that we don't get reimbursed from the, by the state for some of these.
Correct.
Extra spaces.
Correct.
So we're continuing to build on what we think we need versus what we are going to get reimbursed for.
And one point to clarify is we have our educational adequacy score here. The state does do something similar with educational sufficiencies, whether they're assessing the size of the classrooms. But the state size, they're thinking of how big a classroom is and ours are a little bit different. So that is why we wanted to incorporate something similar to the state, but custom to MCPS.
Stuart, were you trying to get a word in?
I was. Thank you. So the question Carla asked earlier about other considerations in the FCI score. And then you pointed us to the CIP prioritization, that this is just part of the prioritization. So I actually have gotten that question a couple of times in the community when they saw the score and they're like, wait a minute, my, my school feels so much worse than the score. And they list all these things. And I'm like, well, some of that is in that 25% part of the metric, the educational adequacy. And so I just suggest, I know I'm on the website of the FCI landing page. And you do have in bold, the FCI data alone does not dictate or sequence specific construction projects. But it might be good to also reference that we consider these other considerations as well in the, on the landing page. So people know, well, what other considerations could there be? And it might make it a little more clear, just because, of course, when you, the first thing you're going to do is say, oh, what's my score compared to these other scores? So I just think it's always good to like use the opportunity to educate as we go along. And then I also, speaking of questions from the community, I wanted to know what was, what are some of the main questions that you received during your first rollout of this to the community?
That was one, certainly that we have received. I think one of the other top ones so was, so if my school is not in there currently, it's not on the website. It wasn't part of the first 52 slash 54 that we assessed. Does that mean I'm not in the CIP? And very good invalid question. I think what we've been explaining to people was this was meant to be about the renovation, renewal, the replacement projects, like the larger projects that we do, but we will absolutely continue to have the countywide projects where you will see many, many more schools featured. And we are using existing data. Like I said, we know the ages of our roofs. So if we compare that because they really need many other systems replaced, then we want to do that as part of a renovation or replacement or renewal project. But if that's the only thing that's aging and everything else is good, then they just need a standalone roofing project. And that's an existing, you know, countywide line item that we have had for years and that we don't anticipate going away and we will continue to have. Again, same for HVAC. We have schools that purely just need their chiller replaced, right? And we need to continue to fund those projects. So that has been one, making sure people don't feel like they're not on that list, that that means they're getting nothing, you know, they're not up for any consideration in the CIP. We also have fire and life safety, many other projects that we fund in those countywide projects. Does that make sense?
Somewhat. I just, a follow-up question. So let's just say, you know, you know, you have these ongoing lists based on our, you know, the roofing projects that HVAC, let's just say a school comes up and that you know that they're up for a new HVAC. Would you look to see, oh, and in two years, they're up for a roof or we're behind? So are you saying you're going to try to package?
Where possible, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not like then you do the HVAC and then two years later, you'd go back to that school and say, oh, let's do your roof. Let's try to get in there and do as much as possible as a renewal.
Where ones that need at least five or more.
As a renovation.
And a larger.
At least five or more. So if it was only two items, then you would keep them.
We might consider though, yeah, they might, one might be in FY '27 and one might stay in FY '31.
But once you hit that level five and then within certain parameters, because when you're looking at a puzzle, everything doesn't fit perfectly together. Like you might, you know, would you look at, oh, we're this far behind or, oh, we know we're going to have to do this within the next couple of years? Like where do you, is there like a buffer that you're going to look at, at these systems? Or are you just going to say, oh, we're behind on all five of these things and therefore we're just going to do it? Because maybe we're hardly ever ahead or on schedule.
Fair statement. Yes. And please chime in. I think, you know, one of the other key things too is we have to constantly be making a decision. What can we complete in the eight weeks of summer, right? And it's, you know, we move fast and furious when it comes to some of these projects in order to complete versus what is better to be done over the course of a year? If we're going to do that, we need to take into account what availability do we have with our holding centers and sequence people in. So that is a big part of how do we sequence everyone in when we want to do something that's a year or two years for these larger and bigger projects?
That was another question I had, if I'm allowed to go on. Okay. Okay. I was looking at, through the presentation at where we have, you say, oh, we should be doing so many a year, right? And if you look at secondary level, we don't have holding centers for secondary level. So how, I'm, I just, I'm wondering how would this work?
We need to consider secondary holding facilities.
Because if we do five, these five projects, right? Or more, that's difficult to do
Yeah.
With kids in the school. Okay, thank you.
Now, often for like an HVAC project at a secondary, we phase those across multiple summers, also a little bit less than ideal. But that is the strategy that has been working too, right? So like a White Oak and a Sligo, Gaithersburg, those have all recently, Sligo and White Oak received their first phase this summer and they'll receive their second phase next summer. So something that we are trying to do, like it is just not achievable to do a secondary in a summer for an HVAC. So we do phase out over two to three, even up to four years for a high school as needed, when it's truly just that one system replacement.
So if you were going to phase the HVAC, you could also phase some of the other projects in the summer too?
Some of the roofing are too.
The larger roof, like high school roofing projects are multiple summers, three, two or three summers. And HVAC is typically four or five for high school currently.
And I believe one of these slides talked about how many renewals you should be doing per year. What slide is that?
So for elementary, it's listed on slide six. So we talked about how we should be doing, again, a combination of renovation, renewal, replacement, six to seven elementary per year.
And do you believe that the holding schools we have for elementary is enough to achieve that goal?
With the current ones we've been using, no. So also need to consider additional ones for elementary.
I just want to make sure the record shows that we do not have a down county area holding school.
Back to the mismatch between the state, what the state refunds us and what we build out. What about community schools? Do they, community schools come with more space requirements?
Yes, they do provide some funding for what's called community use space. So that could be linkages to learning, school-based health centers, high school wellness centers. So they do add a little bit onto that for capacity projects. So currently, we're doing a feasibility study for Springbrook High School for our wellness center. That is a standalone, that is not state-eligible. It would only be if we were adding capacity and capacity was needed through the state's viewpoint, because they have different capacities than our local capacity.
But community schools are more so in the lower grades, right? Like elementary and a few. I guess that's
They're, they're spread out throughout. Yeah, we have plenty of middle schools and I think even high schools.
Okay.
But primarily, we, they started at the elementary school, you're correct.
Okay. All right, welcome, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. My apologies for running late. Traffic was not great with the weather.
Any questions before we move on to the next presentation?
Please go ahead and I'll, I'll catch up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I did want to get approval to, for the agenda, if I could get a motion.
Move approval? Second?
All in favor, raise your hands. That's unanimous. Okay. So the next presentation, we are 4.1 category 12 expenses, which are fixed charges. Again, if you could introduce yourself for the record, Ms. Alfonso Windsor.
Good afternoon. Yvonne Alfonso Windsor, Chief Financial Officer. So I'll go right into the category 12 expenses. This is the time of the year, we usually do this twice a year, in September and in March, April, where we produce a letter that comes to the board and to the county council on our category 12 expenses. At this time, we're reporting on what happened during the fiscal year FY '25 and where we're ending up. And then in March, we give an update of where we are at that point in the year. We're taking a little bit different approach to this presentation today, as you have asked many times, we're digging a little bit deeper. You know, there's a lot of things in this category and I don't think we've ever really talked about what are the components, all the components of the category 12 fixed charges, because it's not just, it is benefits, but there's different kind of benefits within category 12. We're going to review the budget versus the actual expenses for this category in FY ' '25 and then provide an update on our employee benefits plan moving forward. So in here, we wanted to provide really a summary and more detail on what, what is included in category 12. So as you can see here, one of them is the active employee group insurance. We all know about that, right? That is the health insurance for both active employees and then the second line is for our retirees. So this category includes the budget for our health plan. Then we have the FICA or the Federal Insurance Contribution Act. That's the, you know, that's a tax that our employees pay a portion of and we paid another portion. So category 12 accounts for the employer portion of FICA. Then we have our retirement contribution for our MCPS, for the state and local obligations. That is, that is part of our budget. As you know, this year, the state for FY '26 shifted about $20 million of the state retirement to the local budget. That is reflected in the category 12 for FY '26. Then we have, we have grants that fund multiple positions with an MCPS. And that portion of the budget is accounted in category 12 as well, different fund by category 12. And what it does, it really reduces some of our obligations on the local side for category 12 for those positions. This is the category where we fund our risk management, our self-insurance for MCPS. As everyone knows, we are self-insured. We also have tuition reimbursement. This is a benefit for our employees, for our teachers and our supporting services staff where they can take college credits and then request reimbursements from MCPS. And then last but not least, we have, you know, some other small payments reflected here, the emergency assistant payments for our SEU or support services employees, tuition forgiveness, and then also the leave conversion for our administrators where they can cash out some of their leave as they have negotiated over the years. So now we're going to review, we just went through the different categories and this is, this table reflects our budget for FY '25 and the actual expenses for FY '25. You can see the employee, the active employee group, the federal, the FICA, the Federal Insurance Contribution Act funding, the tuition reimbursement and the miscellaneous expenses, they all ended up in a deficit this year. And there were a few surpluses that such a retirement, the grants and the risk management, self-insurance, we got a little credit from the county for our self-insurance. So that led to a surplus in category 12 in this areas. I do want to point out that there is a surplus in the non-tax supported grants. And the reason for that is because we had some revenue failure this year. And what we mean by revenue failure is when, let's say Title I, for example, tells us your budget for this year or your award is going to be $26 million. And then when the award, when they finalize the award, is lower than what they were originally planning to allocate to Montgomery County. So with, you know, the movement in the federal government, we did see some revenue failure, meaning got less money than we were anticipated or originally were told for some of our grants.
So why is that 5.4?
Because we budgeted thinking that we were going to have what they originally told us. And then when we didn't, we spent less amount on the grant, which resulted in a surplus in, in the category 12.
You budgeted 31.9.
Correct.
You spent 26.
0.5.
Because it ended up being less.
Less, because we got less revenue for the grants.
So the budget is not actually the actual?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. That's the, that's the, that's why we call it revenue failure, because the grants is always, you know, we never know exactly how much we're going to get from the federal government. So that's a great question. So then we want to provide a little update, some update on the employee benefit plan. As you all know, we have been struggling with our employee benefit plan. We have a three-year plan to get us back into, you know, fully funding our employee benefits plan. And this year, we managed to negotiate a few items that is going to help us get to the point where we're no longer, we're going to be solvent. Our employee benefit plan is going to be solvent. So in here, you have the next four years, '26, '27, and '28. And as you know, we negotiated last year that the employees are going to pay 1% more for their cost. Their cost share is going to be 1% more across all areas, both active and retirees. So what that means is for in FY '26, because that is going to take place this January, we're anticipating that we're going to get approximately $2.9 million more in revenue from, from that this year. And as you can see, it's going to increase year to year, '27, '28, and '29, because as cost increases, obviously the employee contribution to make up their percentage of the cost share increases. Again, these are all projected amounts. We also negotiated prudent RX and we're seeing that that is going to be a savings. So that is reduced expenditures for RX for prescriptions, about $5.8 million every year. And again, that's a projection that could change, but we are actually seeing in FY ' '25, towards the last six months of FY '25, we did see that change coming in in prudent RX, that additional reduction in expenses. We negotiated the GLP-1 or the obesity medications to, that is only going to be used, certain medications are going to be used for weight management and the rest are going to be used strictly for diabetes. So we are going to, they are projecting that we're going to see a decrease in, in expenses in FY '26 of 2.5 million and then the following three years, about $5 million. Just so that, you know, in FY '23, we were spending about $24 million in GLP-1 drugs. In '24, it went up to $58 million. And by FY '25, it was almost $80 million that we were spending in these drugs. So hopefully with this negotiation, our cost is going to start reducing as well and that's going to have an impact on our employee benefit plan solvency. We also went back to Cigna and we negotiated some contract enhancements with them. And what you're seeing reflected here is in FY '26, they're going to give us a six-month holiday for their administrative fees for $3.4 million. And then in '27 and '28, we negotiated three months holiday for their fees. So that's about 1.7 million. That is no longer available in FY '29, but that's when we actually have to go back and do a request for proposal for our insurance plan. And then last but not least, we also went back to Caremark. They did a market analysis and based on their analysis, they identified reductions for us for this year between five and $7 million. So that is between FY '26 and FY '28, we're going to see approximately savings every year of about $20 million that hopefully will get us to where we need to be in terms of our employee benefit plan. And I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? So again, this is just coming to the board and so to fiscal management first so that we can
Yes, and you will get a memo with all the, with all the final numbers and the explanations of what's, how we're closing the year in category 12.
Great, thank you. I think it's just so helpful to see what's all, what it all involves. So thank you so much for that explanation.
Thank you. I just want to make a note, oh, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to make a note that I appreciated that on slide four, the note of the variances before the category. I just appreciate the extra transparency with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Also just wanted to say thank you for all the work, working with our partners and unions to bring the costs down because we'll all be better off for it. Thank you.
All right, next is agenda item 5.1, Internal Audit Unit Work Plan. We're welcoming a new addition to the Board Office team. For the presentation, please introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, Melvin Phillips.
Thank you, you may begin.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm excited to share with
Mr. Phillips, if you want to just hit your mic there. Can you hear me?
Now, yes.
All right, Melvin Phillips, good evening. Tonight, I'm excited to share with you our fiscal '25 recap and our '26 work plan and also an update on the IAF, that's the Independent Activity Funds. Before I begin, I want to sincerely thank you for the opportunity to serve as the internal audit supervisor over the past 90 days. It's only been 90 days. I've seen firsthand how dedicated the internal audit unit, the board office, and the district is to living out the values, the mission, and the vision of MCPS. I want to take a moment to recognize the internal audit team. They've not only welcomed me, but they've also partnered with me in shaping a clear vision for our, the future of our work. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you so much. So this is a busy slide here, but this is both a recap of what we did last year and also the plan for what we plan to do this year. Obviously, 90 days in the role, I did not deviate too far from what my predecessor did in her previous work plan. So I'll go through a few of these things here. First of all, 90% of our work is the Independent Activity Fund. I think there's some opportunity for us to shift some of our workload there and I'll talk to that in later slides. But my goal here is to complete 101 school audits. And the main, my main priority this year is to focus on how we more clearly define the scope and execution of these audits. And I think there's some opportunities to realize some efficiencies there. Next up is the CIF audit. This audit is generally clean. It happens every three years. The opportunity that I see here is for us to offer recommendations on defining the policy for when funds are actually allocated to the CIF and what the CIF balances should be by school. The Transportation Depot inventory, again, is a relatively clean audit. It's where we evaluate the transportation department's inventory at the close of the year. I did have an opportunity to participate in this this year. It was a lot of fun, you know, checking the fuel balance, the fuel tanks over there in the 95-degree weather. However, I, I do think there's an opportunity, again, to make recommendations on the operation itself beyond just looking at inventory balances. Sales tower revenue, again, this is another audit that generally comes in pretty clean. The recommendations here are generally more geared to schools processing the revenue timely when they receive it. The opportunity that I see here is reevaluating the revenue sharing formula that's currently in place. My understanding is it's been in place since 1997 and more schools could potentially participate in the revenue sharing model and I'd like to evaluate that and make recommendations. Next is the student parking permits. Starting this year, it's no longer, so the student parking permit revenue was used to fund athletics previously. As of this year, there's funds earmarked to, so that that doesn't have to happen anymore. So I, I, we, I think we need to evaluate the impact of that and also make recommendations. And then lastly is the, the purchase card, I'm sorry, payroll operations. This is an audit that we generally did at the school level, where we make recommend, or findings would be based on time sheets, overtime, timeliness of approvals and those types of things. I do understand that there are maybe opportunities at the central office level to evaluate payroll as, as we've transitioned to a new system and we could potentially look at that in FY '26. And then lastly here, we have the JP Mori, Mori and Purchase Card, which has been done in the past. Again, the controller's office, they pull samples and they evaluate a lot of purchases and justifications for purchases. The opportunity here is for audit to kind of evaluate the purchase card policy. You know, in talking to the field, just even just in recent weeks, you know, they do a lot of workarounds, you know, to get their jobs done because of the limits that they have on thresholds and, and that. And I think it's an opportunity And I think it's an opportunity for us to look at how the current policy impacts their work, and also some of the things that they do, not to circumvent, but also like the workarounds that they have in place to get their jobs done, especially in the high schools. So I think there's an opportunity to make recommendations on that. So this is just a highlight of our current responsibilities. What I will say is that over the past few years, the several, several years, the internal audit unit has increasingly absorbed more and more day-to-day operational IAF, which is the, the Activity Fund Support, responsibilities for schools. So that includes, you know, approving transactions and approving system updates, and just really being involved in day-to-day support, which has absolutely been beneficial during times of shortages and turnover. But in my view, it blurs the boundary between audit oversight and the financial operations. My goal is to dig a clear, a more clear trench between IAU as an entity of the Board and also, and, you know, the superintendent's operations. So over the next year, my plan is to work to align our office closer to what the Institute of, the Institute of Internal Auditors defines as objectivity and independence in their standards. And, you know, I'll work with the CFOs, offers, and partners across the operations to help So again, this is internal audit's role as defined in the MCPS Financial Manual for evaluating the IAF. It's, it's clear, evaluates controls to assure proper procedures. And it just, just to recap and support my position that we will continue to work to, work strategically to disco, disco day-to-day support from the internal audit unit of the IAF and work towards the future. And you'll see that in upcoming slide. All right. So a recap of the current IAF. So currently, we closed the year at $21.1 million, up $1.7 million over the previous year at 19.4. So from an internal audit perspective, I think the opportunity for us here is to really understand the, the fund's growth. So over the past, like, for example, in 2020, the fund was 17 million, 17.7 million, right? So it continues to grow each and every year. And I, what the audits will, will include going forward is a evaluation of whether or not IAF funds are being used for the benefit of student activities, right, for students' benefit. And, you know, we shouldn't, we don't necessarily want to be in the business of accumulating, accumulating funds if they're not earmarked for specific purposes. So that, that will absolutely be a part of our evaluation and recommendations in our future audits. So this is a recap, high-level recap of receipts and dispersments across elementary, middle schools, and high schools. Even in the graphic, you can see that receipts exceed dispersments, and what I've seen is this has happened over the past five years, where receipts are exceeding dispersment, although minimal, over time, it grows. And part of our evaluation, as we do our IAF audits, will be to evaluate receipts and dispersments and determine, are they, are they being used for students' benefit, you know, or, you know, are there opportunities for us to do things like, for example, field trips at a lower, at a lower cost to the students, or admission events at a lower cost to students, or, you know, club activities at a lower cost to students based on the current IAF balances. Here, the, so the graphic to the right, you'll see the cash and CIF balances. So CIF is the Centralized Investment Fund. That's essentially the savings account, the savings side of the IAF. So schools are, there's a recommendation and policy that if you, if you're not utilizing funds, you move funds to the, the save, the quote-unquote savings account, the CIF. The opportunity here in our audits is to determine, or is to make policy recommendations on what is the most appropriate CIF levels, you know, based on, you know, school metrics, whether it's enrollment, or, you know, participation in certain events, or, you know, those types of things. But I, I think there's an opportunity for us to make more specific targets for CIF balances across schools.
And what happens to that money?
So currently, it sits, and we earn an interest rate of 3.28% per year. So they, and the, I'd say, quote-unquote, nice thing about the CIF is it's not like a CD, like in your personal account, where the funds have to be there for six months or 12 months before you earn interest. The schools can transfer money in and out of the fund as they see fit. So they do accumulate interest, and those, the interest that they earn on the funds can be used for student activities and other, other activities within the IAF. But currently, the, the recommendation is for them to put funds here in their savings account if they don't plan to, if they don't have an immediate need for it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Okay. So 5 million for elementary, 3 for middle, and 9 plus for high school.
Yes, ma'am. No, it's not. And it, and it makes up about 61% of our total IAF asset. So I, it's absolutely something that should be considered as we're doing our school audits. So this, this graphic illustrates elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, their minimum, maximum between those categories, and also the average balance. And the, the purpose of this is to depict the disparity across schools, which is, is known, you know, it's always been known across I, you know, in the IAF, because obviously, some schools fundraise better, or booster clubs are more active, you know, those types of things. PTAs are more active. I think the opportunity here is for us to make recommend, excuse me, again, make recommendations on what, what the optimal balance should be, you know, based on more quantitative analysis, as such as, you know, enrollment, location, number of activities, number of, of clubs, these types of things. That way, we know when there is a deficit in funds, quote-unquote, or a surplus, right? So my goal here is to make recommendations to our schools as to what those balances should be, and give them a better sense of what they should be charging our students for activities, field trips, club events.
So you can't, if you're out of funds, you can't charge and tap into the fund. It has to be your account.
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
And when you said that, you know, different schools have more active booster clubs and PTA, that just means that they're spending their money for some program, so the school doesn't have to spend the money.
For student activities.
Yeah.
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there a list of what may, what can go into the IAF?
Um, a list of what can go, so...
So what, the, the revenue side, and then also the spending side?
Yes, there's absolutely clear, defined, you know, the policy defines that very clearly on, you know, whether it be donations, or, you know, we, we charge students for field trips, or for, like, the sale tower revenues is an example, or, so there's, there's, I can provide you with a list. And then expenditures, primarily, is going to be things that are for student benefit, right? Things outside of student benefit, where there are strict thresholds and policy guidance are like staff, staff refreshments, where, for example, we don't, we can't spend more than $75 per year per staff member out of the IAF. And, well, firstly, the school would have to have it, and it would have to be with funds that were raised from non-student activities, you know, for, so there are pretty defined policy guidance for what goes in and out, and I can provide that for you.
And the, the donate, you said donations as well, right? And so... That's interesting. I would like to see donations for different schools.
Absolutely.
And also as a total percentage.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, I think what you'll see is the most active donations are probably from booster clubs and high schools. But, so again, let's see, I'm sorry. When we talk about the IAF, you know, I'm following the CFO who manages the MCPS assets of $4 billion. The IAF is a meager $21 million, right, a small amount in terms of materiality. However, I don't want to diminish the impact on students, you know, public trust and, and the impact of school operations. The why, the reason why it's so important that we continue to stay focused on these audits and, and providing the service is because it's, the IAF is so decentralized, it's managed by every school principal, who obviously are focused more on educating students than managing, you know, finances. So they generally have limited financial training, and, you know, the, the IAF directly supports student activities. So going forward, one of the, we'll start to talk about some ways how we make our audits more efficient. Going forward, we're going to issue an opinion. If you, reading our audit reports in the past, we also, we always provide findings, but we never provide kind of a grade for the school, right? So going forward, the auditor will let you know ahead, ahead of time, right? You're going to get one of three opinions, you know, when we walk out of this. So there's an expectation. And the published reports will provide you with an opinion. So clean, meaning there's no evidence of fraud or material misappropriation. Needs improvement, where, you know, the, the IAF is generally well-managed, but there's some opportunity for improvement. And then unsatisfactory, and that's where we see pervasive issues, deviations from policy across samples. We're going to take a more measured, risk-based approach when we do our audits. Risks based on size of school, size of the fund, size of a lot of factors, previous findings, staff turnover, those types of things will inform our audit and help us become more efficient and maximize our resources. We have six auditors, and again, I want to do 101 audits this year. This is just a, an example of what that risk, where it's risk-based, risk-based approach looks like. There's inherent risk in every, you know, in all areas, and we'll assign risk levels to those areas. And that helps, again, inform the audit and inform our, our opinion once we wrap up the audit. And it just makes the audit more efficient. Categories, kind of bucketizing or putting findings in categories, again, it helps the auditor, and it also helps the audity, understand what we're looking at, what we're looking for, and how we, how we come up with our assurance, what we call reasonable assurance. Auditors can never provide what's called absolute assurance, right? But reasonable assurance, and these areas are defined. So what are we looking for? Fraud, misappropriation, misreporting, and waste, or waste, and waste, maybe? So our samples are pulled based on those things and based on those risk areas, right? The audit process is well-defined now, and what, our opportunity is to convey it to the audity ahead of the, the audit, and make sure there's just clear expectations as to how the field work will proceed. One thing that I will be, that I am implementing with our future audits, our interviews, this is something that we haven't done recently, where we're pulling sponsors, boosters, PCA folks aside, and doing an independent interview to see if, how they're interacting with, with the IAF and the, the finance folks at the schools. And ultimately, my goal for the board is for you to see the internal audit unit as a, as your eyes and ears, your, your eyes and ears on the ground. Right now, like I said earlier, we're spending 90, probably 90% of our time on the, the IAF. I think there's a huge opportunity for us to look beyond the IAF, once we become more efficient at doing those audits, to look at bigger picture items, and become an even more strategic partner of the board. My vision is, next year, when I provide you with the work plan, that I provide you with a menu of services, or a menu of audits, to help inform the work plan, well, ahead of, as we develop the work plan in tandem, where, where we can discuss and reach out to stakeholders and say, what, what do we want our internal audit service to focus on this year? What's important to the district? What's important to the community? What's important to the schools? What's important to the board, right? So there's a menu, there should be a menu, and we, our, our work plan should be even more informed by the strategic plan, and that's the goal going forward. And lastly, the audit team will be engaging in professional development this year, and the goal here is to, to reach the internal institute, the, I'm sorry, the Institute of Internal Audit Standards for, for an internal audit unit. And a part of the, among those standards are CPE requirements for all of our auditors, you know, every two years. We're going to kick that off, starting next month, with, we actually have a, a learning event that's going to be hosted by the Institute of Internal Auditors, that a, a instructor's going to come here, and we're going to do some, some, we'll do some training here. And again, it's, it's to bring the department up to standard when it comes to an internal audit team, for us to, to position us for those even higher-level audits that I discussed previously. And, did I go the wrong, I went the wrong way? All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Ms. Stewart?
I'm looking at your future work plan potential.
I thought that might get some attention.
That's ambitious, first of all.
Yeah, well, so those are, you know, the expectation wouldn't be that we do everything, right? What I would envision is that we would survey folks who would inform our work plan, right? So we didn't, we'd survey, obviously, the Board and directors across the district, you know, stakeholders, right? And we determine what is important, and where can audit help most, right?
So I, I want to put a plus one on capital projects.
Okay.
I've had some tours recently, and I've seen, this is a problem, I think, across a lot of different projects, not just for schools, it's something that's, comes up periodically. And it's when, you know, concrete work, and then a couple of years later, it's crumbling.
Yeah.
Right? And so is that something that we're going back to talk to contractors, et cetera? Are we making sure that our investments are actually working within a couple of years? Concrete's been an issue, I understand, in the industry, but that's just a small thing, but it is frustrating, right, when you see good money being spent...
Yeah, absolutely.
... on improving a school, and you go back and, and see things literally falling apart.
Yep.
So, and then we've had a couple of capital projects that might be, that would be good for us to review them, to see if that actually worked for the community after the fact. So there's other, all of these are great, but that's just something that I've seen over the last few years.
Ms. Stewart?
Thank you. And I wanted to welcome you here. Thanks for bringing up here. And then also, thank you for the deeper look at the Independent Activity Funds. We see these audits come through our inboxes, too, and we noticed the same pattern. And we noticed the same patterns, right? The procedural error, the mismanagement, the non-compliance with policy that comes, like, we, we notice those patterns as well. So I appreciate you elevating that too. And then for my colleagues, I think something for us to think about too is the reality of like physical cash in our school buildings from a classroom perspective. When a kid brings that to you for their field trip, that trying to comply with policy can be really difficult to get it down with certain number of hours and things. But also the other side of the reality that that's how many of our families conduct most of their business. So just something for us to think about moving forward and how we use that. I wanted to make another point, mostly to my colleagues. The last time we looked at this policy was about 10 years ago. I know in policy world that 10 years is sometimes on the shorter side. Some of our policies are older than that, but a lot has changed in, in 10 years. That might be something we consider looking at in the future.
Yeah, can we make a note of that for the policy committee, please?
Thank you.
Stuart, and then last question, we're going to move on.
Actually, I, I'm just very happy that you have new energy coming in because, and I would love to look at the equity issues in our IAF funds and fund balances. And that's why I ask questions about donations. I just think that we should be aware that I've seen different, kids are charged differently from school to school
Right.
For graduation.
That's exactly right.
Accoutrements, right? And so I don't, you know, I, I'm not sure if that really makes sense that it just depends on what school you go to, whether you're going to be charged $50 or $100. And based on even what you can afford. So just something that maybe we need to look at and then think about how we want to strategically deal with that in the future.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you so much and look forward to the work ahead. Next item is 6.1, operating budget fiscal year 27 process, Ms. Alfonso Windsor.
Good evening again. This is not, this is going to be on the shorter side of the presentation. So we are currently obviously in the development process of our operating budget for FY '27. Believe it or not, FY '27. So over, as, as we did last year, we are doing zero-based budgeting. We are asking the offices to really evaluate their expenses, their personnel and justify every single one of them and determine if it's something that we must do because it's a federal, state, local requirement. If it is something that we should do or is there something that we might not need to do? So the offices are in the process of doing their budget right now. Their budget submissions are due, all of them by the end of the month. It's a staggered approach. In October, we will start collaborating. We are rolling out a budget advisory committee. That's where a group of stakeholders come in and we hear about their priorities and we present to them the priorities of the, of the, of MCPS. Additionally, before I move farther down, September 29th is the kickoff of our staffing standards work group. That is kicking off on Sep, on September 29th. We're bringing all three areas together, elementary, middle and high school to set our guidelines, our norms, determine, look at the data that we have collected over the last two months. The work groups are going to be led by the deputy chief of finance, Alan Francois. We finally got all the participants from our associations, our principals, our teachers, our supporting services and central office staff. And then we're probably going to have three more work groups or sessions, individual, elementary, middle and high before the budget is, is finalized, just to identify the main priorities that we want to roll forward for FY '27. And then we'll finalize a more comprehensive staff, staffing standards, you know, before the end of the year. But we know that this is something that's going to have to be faced in, that is not, it's not going to be a one-year thing, right? We're going to have to stagger, you know, a face-in approach. So that is going to take us through October and November as well. We will continue working on the staffing guidelines and the budget advisory committee. We will meet with all the offices to review their budget and then the superintendent will make the final decisions. And he will release, he will release his budget in December of 2025.
And just the, the staffing guidelines, you call them, are related to the class size?
We're really looking at everything. We're looking at the positions that are allocated to the schools. We're really looking at things from, with fresh new eyes because they have not been updated in many years. So we're looking at the maintenance allocations. We're looking at the special education allocations. We're looking at security. We're looking at classroom teachers. What kind of supports their school get? Do they have the right supports? You know, administration, everything. We are really looking at the entire picture in terms of our schools.
Stuart?
Would you say this is part of the zero-based budgeting?
It is. And because for schools, different from central office, we have, in our school system, we really have a mixed staffing delivery, right? Our schools start from scratch every year. We look at their enrollment. There are certain positions that I always get principals and so on, right? An administrative secretary, that's really it. Everything else is looked every year. They start, they start from zero-based, based on their projections. And then central offices are a little different. But yes, 100%, we just want to make sure that, you know, we, we are benchmarking with other districts. See what, you know, everyone else does so that we can make the right decisions moving forward.
Thank you.
Just as the committee may note, there is on the, the work plan for December, there is an update on, specifically on the staffing work groups. And so that that information will be informed. There'll be a significant update on that prior to the presentation, the operating budget later in December.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'm going to turn it over if there's no other questions for our next item, which is our contractual, contractual services updates that I know is something that the board has been very interested in.
Do you have any questions on the operating? Please introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening. I am Carly Thompson and I am the executive director in the division of financial management. So like Yvonne stated, you know, there's definitely been an interest, not only in the level of transparency that we have as a district around our operating budget, but certainly as it pertains to a component of that, which is contractual services. So the goal of the next few slides here is to do just that, continue our efforts around transparency and around the fact that we know that there, there is an interest here in terms of our stakeholders. And then also wanting to elevate the connection around the budget for contractual services. And then how is that realized throughout the operating year when we bring items back to the board for approval and move forward in the year in that way? So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. So I'm just going to set a little context here around contractual services as part of our overall $3.6 billion budget for FY 2026. Out of our total operating budget, you've probably heard us say multiple times that around 90%, it's a little less now in this particular fiscal year, but usually around 90% of the total operating budget is used to support salaries and benefits. So that's obviously a huge chunk, but still in terms of dollars, that does leave $417.4 million in this particular year to budgeted for all of our other expenditures. So that could be contractual services, supplies and materials, everything else besides salaries and benefits. So kind of digging into that pie a little bit further, of that chunk of expenditures not related to salaries and benefits, 111.4 million of that is related to contractual services, which of the total operating budget, it's only about 3%. But when you, you know, whittle that down a little bit, it makes out about a quarter, a little more than a quarter of the, you know, all the other expenditures that we have. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. So just going to kind of break down contractual services a little bit here. Over the last couple of years, we've provided some documentation to the board, kind of breaking down our contractual services by state budget category. And that's what you see here. So as you know, we are required to align every line item of our operating budget to a state category. And I'll do a little plug for the operating budget here. If you're not as familiar with our state budget categories in terms of the public, we do have an appendix in the back of the operating budget book that gives descriptions of all the state categories and gives you some context of what you could expect would be budgeted in alignment with those. But in terms of contractual services, you can see from the graph here, significant investment falls within category 1, $21.8 million. And when it comes to category 1, you kind of want to think that these are the resources that, or services that cross, across our whole district. So the language that is in that definition of category 1 is it's services that are not confined to a single school building. So these are really things that service from central to schools and our other facilities. A significant investment, you'll see there also in category 5, other instructional costs, $20.9 million. And that's pretty much everything like it says. All of the other instructional costs that support our schools and our students that are not supplies and materials, not the teacher salaries, so on and so forth. And we'll see the connections in the next few slides between the categories and then also kind of the different areas of the organizational structure where they fall. And then just two other items to highlight. Category 6, that's pretty self-explanatory. Category 6 is for special education. All of our resources for special education will be in this category. And then lastly, category 10, operation of plant. So think about all of the resources and services that go into keeping our facilities operational each day. So kind of flipping the perspective here a little. So we were just looking at the contractual services budget by state category. And now we're looking at that budget breakdown by the, our organizational structure in terms of our chapters. So again, you can see clearly the most significant investment we do see in our district operations chapter and, and all of the activities that fall under that, $31.1 million. Technology services, we're going to see in a minute the kind of tie-in in terms of the fund spread administration and thinking about all the technology services that don't just service our, our school facilities, but they service our whole district. And then lastly, of certainly there's a significant investment in terms of contractual services in terms of direct supports to schools at about 22 and a half million. So diving into just a little bit deeper, I'm not going to go through every bullet here, but just wanted to provide some in-depth examples in terms of those chapters where we saw the most significant investment in contractual services. What are, you know, really the items when you get down to it or the services that we're needing this funding to support? So in the case of district operations, you know, you can see the funding breaks down between the different categories. We have resources for student transportation, you know, thinking about the taxi service that we provide in accordance with the McKinney-Bentow Act and supporting our, our homeless students in, in getting to school. Category 10, operation of plant, the daily recycling services that we pay for, green energy that we've invested in. And then you can see in the other two categories, things like when we have the snow days, we have amazing staff, but we certainly can't handle that effort alone. So we do contract out to get some services as it relates to snow removal. And then other items, our, our point of sale system, things like that are all obtained through contractual services. And so like I was alluding to earlier, when it comes to technology services, we do have a significant investment under this particular area where the funds fall under category 1. And you can see when it comes to our different business systems. So we've heard a lot recently about our new finance and HCM system, the hub plus. That is a system that services everyone across the district. So that's why it's captured under category 1. And then in addition to our other various power school type systems, you think about disaster recovery, all of the different items that we need to make sure that all of our technological systems are, are running smoothly. And then we do have some items here under category 10, operation of plant. Things like our Wi-Fi network, VPN connection, my telephone service. All of those are, are captured under there.
So this is not exhaustive. These are just the, the bigger ticket items.
Yes, yep, yep. Certainly there, it, it could be a longer list here, but we only have so much slide space. And so the last one here that I just wanted to highlight, of course, the different types of services that are direct support to schools. So when we think of chapter one, just as a category, that's certainly what it's for. Facts, everything that's going and, and touching our schools directly. And so you can see here the curriculum that we capture under category 5. And then also we have specific curriculum that supports our special education students under category 6. And the different types of program and things that we have, paying sports officials, we contract out to get some of those services, adjudication judges. And then bouncing back down again to category 6, when we need support through private duty nursing services, speech and language services. Those are all the different types of ways that we have to invest our contractual services fund to, to support our schools and our students. So the last kind of connection I wanted to make is, you know, we go through the budget process. The budget gets approved for 100-plus million dollars worth of contractual services. So what comes after that? And so this really is, all of budget is really a cyclical process. So what you can expect is that, so we set the budget for the type of service we need to have. But then how do we ultimately make the connection with the vendors who are going to provide those services to our district? And so that's obviously where our procurement processes come into play. We have a procurement manual out there if you, if you'd like to take a read to invest more into how we do our procurement services. But ultimately, we bring items to the board during the business meetings for review and approval when it comes to entering into new contracts or if we do look to extend certain contracts. And so after that process is complete, you know, it starts over again, like Yvonne said, in terms of the zero-based budgeting. Each year, the offices will all come back and will have done their analysis and figure out, you know, how much do I need for contractual services in this next year? And so then it comes back again, we'll make adjustments for what we need, whether that's new contracts or new types of service that we're looking to obtain. Maybe it's just rate change is certainly a thing we see with contractual services. Or if a type of service is not something we need any longer, you'll see all of those changes come through again when we come through the budget process once more. And then it kind of all kicks off again. So that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
And thanks for breaking this down in the, in this way. I'm, I'm curious about mostly category 6 that, you know, our speech and language services, our occupational and physical therapy services. We have also like this category, right? These people that are on our staff and that we pay. Can you explain to us more why they're also contractual?
Sure. So I can speak a little bit to that. So certainly we do have full-time positions budgeted for certain aspects of this work. But certainly there are times where we aren't able to fill positions. So that is one avenue when we might, we have to provide these services. It's not an option. So if we aren't able to secure that support through our full-time staff, we do have to look outward to obtain that service contractually to make sure, you know, our students are, are provided what they need.
And these services should be exactly the same as the ones that our staff are providing?
I can take that. So obviously we do prefer, you know, to be able to hire staff and have our staff deliver those services. But sometimes, as, as, you know, we try the best we can. For example, in the last few years, we've had a high vacancy rate for a speech language pathologist. And we have to supplement that, you know, with the contractual services. Our first priority is also always trying to fill those vacancies. But we know that we have to provide the services to students. So, you know, I can't say that is 100%. Obviously. Obviously, we want students to build those relationships with our staff, but sometimes, unfortunately, the current environment doesn't allow us to fill some of those vacancies. Although, we're doing really good this year from what I hear.
Thank you, I appreciate the extra context.
Ms. Stewart?
If we have questions about, like, items and different funds, is that something we can just send an email, like, as questions come up as we work on the budget coming up?
Absolutely, anytime. We also have a spreadsheet that we've been providing to the board and to the county council. I think we started either last year or the year before the specific contractual services, and any questions you have on that. Additionally, like I mentioned with the zero-based budgeting, you know, we're asking staff to really be very detail-oriented and let us know exactly how they're going to be funding, using the funding next year, so that as we review the budget with the superintendent, he can make, you know, decisions of, you know, what he wants to move forward and, you know, why he might want to, you know, hold back a little bit.
Is there a specific item that you have a question about?
Well, I wasn't sure exactly what ADA, independent medical consultations under Fund 01, which is administration, is because it did seem to be a very large jump.
It is, and it has been increasing over the last three or four years. So, you know, when our staff request ADA accommodations and they submit that request to our Department of Compliance and Investigations, they have to determine if, you know, if they need a special equipment for the staff, or, you know, whatever the needs are, and then we have to provide those accommodations. So that what that funding is for. But yes, it has increased substantially over the last three or four years.
That's good to know, thank you.
And along the same line, what is the family childcare line item under food services?
Sure, so that is, and I'm certainly not an expert in this, so if we have more questions, I can go back to that team, but that is a federal program for the child and adult care. And so we have to reimburse childcare providers for the meals that they provide to kids that attend.
Is that part of our federal food program?
It is part of the funding that we get from food services received from the federal government, it's part of the reimbursement as well.
And what's the mass communication systems?
So that is just in general, any of the systems that we use. I believe that includes the REMIND and those types of systems where we are doing that mass communication out across the district, Parent Square.
And yes, and we're moving, we're moving from REMIND to Parent Square, but it's going to take us a few months, you know, to make that transition, but yes.
Yeah, sorry for the very specific questions. And I think that what the discussion that we had at the board table on specific items was on some contracts where we've had them over the years, and at what point do we learn, learn what that provider is delivering and kind of train the trainer so that we can continue to do that rather than depending on contracts? So I think that's something that the board will be continuing to scrutinize in the upcoming budget. And you said that the detailed list is where?
We did provide that.
To the board?
Yes, correct.
I'll probably have more questions on this long list, I don't want to keep us. But basically, I'll be looking at anything that has, like, a significant jump, just so we understand, you know, again, and to reevaluate to see where we, other places we could cut. For instance, I wouldn't want ever to cut accommodations, right? But that means maybe we need to look somewhere else.
Absolutely, and the biggest thing normally in contractual services is the rate increases, because as you know, vendors negotiate different rates due to inflation year to year. So that's been the biggest increase we've seen. But obviously, you know, the board is looking to see what, how we're spending the funding, you know, and those are conversations that, you know, we're glad to have. Obviously, it's important for everyone to understand how we're spending our money. So reach out anytime that you have any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you both for the presentations, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are moving on to 8.1, academic return on investment. This is a continuation of the discussion that began at our last meeting regarding the committee's interest in using the strategic plan and program evaluations prepared by the Office of Shared Accountability to dive deeper into important MCPS programs and initiatives. This work will allow the committee to best ensure the effective use of MCPS resources to support and grow successful programs with a high degree of direct student impact. I would again ask staff at the table to introduce themselves for the record.
Good evening, Keisha Addison, Director of Shared Accountability. All right, so this evening, I have the great opportunity to continue the conversation that we began on this concept of academic return on investment that was raised at your previous fiscal management committee meeting. Tonight, I will discuss how it looks in practice in public education and what we might consider as next steps here in our district. Again, this is still an introductory discussion, so my focus will be high-level framing rather than detailed analysis. So in the business world, return on investment, or ROI, usually means financial return. And in public education, our return is not necessarily profit, but it is student learning and outcomes. And so academic return on investment allows us to ask, for every dollar we invest in a program, service, or initiative, what improvement in student learning are we seeing? This gives us a structured way to evaluate programs, not just on whether they are implemented, but whether they are effective and cost-effective. And so when we start with what we mean by academic return on investment, or a ROI, at its core, it's a systemic approach to looking at how well our investments, whether that's programs, staff time, resources, or interventions, translate into meaningful outcomes for students. The purpose is accountability, making sure every dollar that is contributing to student learning and well-being is well-spent. And just as businesses ask if they're getting value for the money, we in education ask whether our strategies are truly improving learning enough to justify the resources that we dedicate to them. So our strategic plan provides a clear roadmap for where we want to go as a district. High levels of academic achievement, closing opportunity gaps, and preparing all students to be future-ready graduates. Academic return on investment directly supports these goals. For goal one, academic return on investment allows us to examine, for example, whether literacy investments are truly improving achievement, reducing opportunity gaps in student groups, specifically those that are named in our plan. It also connects to goal two and the profile of a graduate, since we can ask if programs are not just raising test scores, but also building critical thinking, creativity, and student well-being. Finally, academic return on investment strengthens goal three by ensuring transparency and accountability in how we use resources. In short, it serves as a tool that helps us to live out the commitments of our strategic plan. And so why does academic return on investment matter? Well, first, accountability. Again, it shows us we're using resources wisely. Second, equity. It ensures our funding decisions prioritize students who need the most support. Third, it's about better decision-making, giving us evidence to decide whether to keep, scale, or discontinue programs. And importantly, it shifts the focus from what we spend to what we achieve, moving the conversation from inputs to outcomes. And for example, if we have two literacy programs that may cost the same, but one is resulting in higher achievement, then that program would be deemed as having a stronger return on investment. So when we think about applying academic return on investment, it involves a straightforward but powerful process. We begin by identifying which programs or practices to evaluate, so if you think back to our evaluation framework, it connects to that. Then we measure outcomes, whether that's academic achievement, attendance, behavior, or student well-being. Next, we compare the cost against those results, considering not only dollars, but staff time and training. And from there, we reflect and decide, is this program worth continuing, scaling up, adjusting, or replacing? Over time, this creates, excuse me, a culture shift, a culture shift where every initiative is considered through the lens of impact per investment. And so as we think about where to start, we have two options. First, we could examine completed evaluation reports. These are ready now and give us immediate insights into what worked and what didn't, though they may focus on programs that have already ended or shifted. Second, we could look at evaluation studies that are currently in progress. This would allow us to engage with the process, shape how the data are analyzed, and align more closely with current priorities. Now, the trade-off is that those results are not yet final and may not provide immediate decision-making priorities. And so here on my last slide, I would recommend a phased approach. And so perhaps we begin with completed evaluation reports, which will provide us with tangible examples right away. Next, we would then transition to some end-progress studies so that you, as a committee and as board members, can see the methodology in real time and align with our current strategic goals. And then over time, we establish an academic return on investment reporting structure to this committee as well as to the board, so that academic impact is consistently considered alongside fiscal stewardship. And I would be remiss if I didn't connect it to the interest that we had in the Policy Management Committee meeting earlier this week, it could have been yesterday, I don't know, that we have an interest in developing a policy, and our opportunity is to embed language around academic return on investment into that policy, which could connect across the board. So this would be the position for us to make smarter, more equitable, and more transparent decisions for our students. And I will turn it back over to you all for discussion.
And that's a policy on program evaluation?
Yes, and so one of the examples I shared in that meeting and looking at other districts, there are districts that embedded in, well, one district I found embedded in their policy related to program evaluation, they have an entire section focused on academic return on investment.
So based on your recommendations in terms of completed evaluations, could you give us an example of one that's completed and what that process might look like for us?
Yeah, that's a great question. So there are, and I should, oh, I do have my list. In terms of thinking about some of the completed program evaluations that we have, give me one second. One of the ones that we could consider that has been completed is related to, what's a good one? I'm going to say two-way immersion. So we have evaluated two-way immersion over a few years, and our more recent completed evaluation related to two-way immersion, from our recommendation, kind of had that caution, the yellow, so our stoplight chart, we had red, yellow, green, and it had a yellow. And so there are opportunities embedded in that to bring that back and to determine what, to what extent do we want to expand, scale up, pause, and evaluate kind of the recommendations from that. So an opportunity for us, particularly with program evaluation reports, is really digging deep into the recommendations that are elevated. So when we see the stoplight chart, that's just a quick reference, but it's the recommendations that really would be a place for us to kind of determine what is impacting, or how well things are impacting student outcomes as intended.
Okay, that's a good scenario, example, because I read that one, and I remember some of the outcomes. But yellow means, well, what I remember with the evaluation is that the different programs were implementing their models differently.
Schools, yes.
The schools.
Yes.
And so the data is not conclusive, because if you have everybody doing different things, how do you draw conclusions about, does this school's model work versus this individual school model work?
So one of, I appreciate you elevating that. One of the things that I always share is if it is not implemented as intended, we can't see the outcomes that we would expect. And so, yes, in some instances, for some program evaluation studies, the recommendation might point to a need to engage and work towards consistency of implementation to better impact student outcomes. In some program evaluation studies, a recommendation might be about expanding, right, the program. So in some instances, when we look at a program that has an opportunity in terms of supports, I think of the restorative practices study, there was an aspect in that study that talked about the technology supports for schools to help them track and monitor that information. And so there might be a recommendation embedded in that, while it's not the entire program, there's an aspect of the program where there might be a recommendation to say, consider expanding, which from a district, from a level perspective, that's something that would come here in terms of, is that an area we want, we would want to invest additional funding as it relates to helping to support, like, consistency of implementation in a program or initiative?
Is there one that had green?
Yes, well, we won't use the regulation as that.
I guess my thinking is the yellows will require action, right? I mean, it's still going.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that now they're implementing a more consistent model for two-way immersion, and then you're going to have to reevaluate in a few years?
So that is the opportunity we have that led to the conversation around a policy. To date, we have not been as consistent of, once we engage in an evaluation, circling back to it within the next two to three years. And so how do we build a process that allows us to engage in a comprehensive program evaluation study, again, of that topic? What we originally presented is, especially for programs that receive a yellow, is supporting that program management team with their ongoing data monitoring to kind of support and be responsive to the recommendations that are elevated.
But why evaluate that one if you knew that they weren't implementing it consistently?
So we did not, at the time, we did not. And I would say the last time we had evaluated two-way immersion was maybe four or five years before, so it was technically due to be examined again. And a number of our program evaluation requests either comes from the engagement that we hear from you all during board conversations, or requests from program staff, or the superintendent.
Okay, so your recommendation is that we could look at the ones that are completed, the reds, the yellows, and the greens?
Yes.
The reds?
We do not, I will say, we don't have any reds. I think we are very, we are very cautious around a red. I think the closest we were to a red was a few years ago, which was the social-emotional learning curriculum that we ended up discontinuing based on that mid-year feedback. But we did not, because we discontinued the program during the school year, there was not a need to kind of finalize that program evaluation report on that one.
Okay, so I guess the greens would be a more clear cut?
Yes.
Maybe start with the green to show us how the, you're getting the outcomes and maybe a fiscal no in terms of, is this something that's costing more than the traditional classroom model?
And one of the considerations, and I would, we would, let me think about how we can categorize them. So like the example I provided, we have multiple programs supporting literacy, right? And let's say all of them have a green, but when we, what we have been more intentional to do recently is providing the cost, like a page of how much it costs in our program evaluation studies. So if we're looking at, let's just pretend we have three different programs or initiatives focused on supporting literacy, and then we look at the cost of them, and then kind of the impact, is there an opportunity to, instead of doing three different, and I'm not saying we are, but if we're doing three different literacy programs, maybe it's just this one, as an example of how we might be able to re-envision and support kind of this conversation?
Thank you. Ms. Silvestri asked quite a few of my questions and wondering, so thank you. But one of the criticisms that we often hear in the community is that we're slow to evaluate things, that these evaluations come out slowly. I think that we all really appreciate how comprehensive these can be. Is one of the goals of the system that we are getting these evaluations back? It's one of the goals of the system that we are getting these evaluations back faster because we, as we're talking about return on investment, we don't want to keep investing in something that maybe hasn't been working for a little while, but we haven't evaluated it recently.
Yes, no, I appreciate that statement and agree. I will tell you, we have evolved in terms of our turnaround time. It's still not where I would like it to be and where I've recognized the impact on the decision-making, but we've come a long way in terms of the turnaround time. I will say, this past school year was more of an anomaly in terms of just staff vacancies and transition that really impacted our ability to move. And then some of the transition, some of our reports kind of got hung up, and we didn't realize that, I'll take that ownership in terms of like, hey, where's this report? But our goal is to be able to provide you all as a board information about programs and initiatives as best as possible during or before the budget season. The challenge for us, or change that, the opportunity is when we think about when our budget season starts, right? So Ms. Alfonso Windsor, we're already talking about FY27 now, and we have not yet, as a district, identified programs and our initiatives to evaluate for this school year. So that, all of these things have to kind of align together, and that creates some of the opportunities that we have to think about. What can we provide that will be sufficient to have enough information to make a budgetary decision without being premature with some of those decisions?
Thank you. It sounds like some of, some criteria could be useful for us to use in deciding things going forward, maybe even something that is genuinely criteria-based instead of just, I don't want to say just will of the board, but you know, to give us a little bit more direction could be useful. Thank you.
Stuart?
So just real quick, I think this may be the third time, perhaps in the last 28 hours, that Dr. Addison is at this table talking about these, these concepts between work that's going on with this committee, with the Policy Management Committee, and with the Strategic Planning Committee. And I think there has been some discussion about knowing that, you know, there are different members on different committees, kind of bringing that together more holistically. I think that we'll get at exactly what you're talking about.
Ms. Stewart?
So my question is, with the evaluation, how do you track kids, how many years? For instance, so if a child went to a two-way immersion, maybe the actual years they're in it, you would see a certain amount of performance or growth, but then five years later, you might see something different. And so I am curious how, if a program has been in effect for so many years, do you look at that cohort late?
Potentially. So I would say, so for some program evaluation studies, yes, there is the intent to look at students from a longitudinal perspective. So one of the things that we are currently working on is an examination of the very first cohort of students who were in Math 4-5, who are seventh grade now, right? So we're looking at kind of their performance over time, and is there a difference with regard to their outcomes? Some studies are focused on the implementation aspect more so, and then some are just what happened in one particular school year. It really depends upon what the requesting individual is seeking, and we work in terms of our expertise as researchers and evaluators in alignment with the program evaluation standards, national program evaluation standards, to ensure that we kind of meet that need. So it, it depends in terms upon the research questions that are examined.
And I know, I know this is more difficult, but some of our programs are in high school, and so we would like to know how they did after they graduated. And that is ultimately, right, our goals, like we have successful future adults.
Yes.
So I can think of a couple of examples where that would be useful. Do you ever end up doing that kind of evaluation?
Not yet, and I always say, put a yet on the end. The opportunity for us as a district is to engage in a post-graduation survey. So our opportunity to, and Ms. Silvestri, I know we talked about this a few years ago, right? This is one of your interests in terms of our opportunity to say, all right, class of 2025, where are you now? And our opportunity to circle back to those students and engage in some follow-up communication. A few times, we've done some small-scale conversations with students who have graduated, but it's been on a very narrow topic. I believe of two years, two or three years ago, we engaged in conversations around completing the FAFSA as an example. But from an academic or career base, we have not yet engaged in those types of studies.
And my last little plug, I know you mentioned evaluating, I think you said compact math, right? So this year, there was a couple of schools that did it online, so I would love to see how that worked out. I've heard good things anecdotally, but I would just like to see, yeah, how, is, was that effective? Thank you.
Is that something you looked at?
Not for this, and as we are working toward identifying our FY26 program agenda, right, that is an opportunity for us to include. So that's what I wrote down.
Yeah, but I know there's a lot of things on the table for FY26, so. So I think that the, I want to make sure that the evaluations that you have completed are front and center in the budget development process. Because your example of restorative justice, for example, you said that, I think that evaluation said, there's still a lot of work to be done to make sure that schools are building their capacity to implement it well. But if there's a recommendation that this is the next thing that we need in order to move that program forward, that needs to be in the budget, not just, you know, more positions that are going to keep growing the program without the needed intervention that it needs to get to the next level. So is, how much of, how much attention is paid to the program evaluations as you're building the budget? Or is that a question for Ms. Alfonso Windsor?
Yes, I would invite her to the table. And I do, again, an opportunity for us as a district to determine, how do we elevate the recommendations? And as a reminder, each program manager for the program or initiative has to write a response to the recommendations, and we post all of that on our websites, whatever the recommendations are, and the response to the recommendations are posted. And so I see that as an opportunity to kind of connect to, here's what's been identified, and here's, like, if there's a recommendation related to something that's financial or the fiscal aspect, it could be connected.
Does my restorative justice example make sense?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, like, just having the program evaluations front and center as you're building the budget. So you're, let's say that there's a recommendation from a director that says, we need more restorative justice stipends. But the program evaluation says that in order to really move the needle on good implementation of restorative justice, you need X, Y, and Z, not necessarily more stipends for. So I just want to make sure that you are looking at that as you're deciding on the budget for FY27.
Sure. In full transparency, that has not been the way that the process has been taken in the past, but it is something that we are looking forward to doing, and we all started, you know, this school year, making sure. And we started some of those conversations a couple of years ago, when we were looking at those evaluations, and somehow that, that just fell off, you know, with the ESTER and so on. But it's absolutely something that we need to consider to make sure that we are locating the right resources if the program is moving forward so that we can achieve, you know, the full potential of the program.
And then, you know, there's some outliers. I think Ms. Wolf said in our last meeting that she's interested in us evaluating things that are touching a large population of students because your resources are limited, and if we're just evaluating this little niche program here, and that, that's not worth your time. We need to evaluate things that are touching the majority of our students. And we do still have some, like, we have the Innovative School Year Calendar that I know has gone through evaluation, and it's been very quiet the last year. So I'm curious about what the future holds for that program because it is costly, it is expensive. I think it's more expensive than having our regular school calendar and the summer intervention. So those are all decisions that I'm sure you think about, and decisions are made, but I want you to make sure that we're looking at those costly and meaningful programs. I know it's, it means, it's a meaningful program, but to that school community, but when money is tight, we have to make sure that we're getting return on investment.
And I do, I would say, we have an opportunity in our program evaluation framework, where we have those seven steps of kind of, until we get to the completed product, is to add an additional step that allows us to kind of share it with the finance team so that then, before or even during, right, that opportunity to ensure that they have, at a minimum, anything that elevates some type of fiscal connection to make that an intentional part of our process.
Okay. Any other questions? So I, what I'm hearing is that we're going to adopt your recommendation, and then we can have discussions in the planning for the next meeting in terms of which completed evaluations are a good, are prime for us to have that in-depth discussion about what did the outcomes tell us, how much money was spent, what's the future of this program, how many students is it, is it serving? And then transition to in-progress studies. All right. Thank you so much for staying to the end of this meeting, but I think this is very exciting work, so thank you for your, your hard work on this. Thank you. Okay. The final item on the agenda is 9.1, the Board Expenditure Report for Fiscal 25. Any questions from committee members regarding the report?
I hate to make it all about me, but my name is spelled incorrectly.
Mr. Lockman, for the record?
All good. We will make sure that that is, that that is corrected, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions about the report?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Any further questions, final comments, or new business to bring before the committee this evening? No? Okay, well, that concludes today's Fiscal Management Committee meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Okay. All in favor, raise your hands, and we are adjourned.